Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of September 12, 2017. First item is a salute to the flag.
To the flag.
Based on the last few meetings and some suggestions by a few residents, we've drawn up procedures for how our 5:00 PM weekly meetings are going to happen. We'll go over them shortly. I also want to let you know that we did look into other suggestions, bylaws, and preposting the agenda. However, these items aren't necessary for a small town like us. We did check into other surrounding towns and it's not something they utilize as well. We did put some information on the website. So I'm going to read that to you first before we go over the procedures of the meeting. The Board of Selectmen meet weekly on Tuesdays at 5:00 PM at the Acton Town Hall unless otherwise noted. Additionally, the Board of Selectmen meet weekly on Tuesdays at 3:00 PM at the Town Hall as a workshop with the Town Administrator. All meetings and workshops are open to the public, but the Board reserves the right to not allow public participation in workshops. Approved minutes from Selectmen meetings can be found on the Town website that dates back to 2006. Beginning this month of 2017, there will be a member of the Board of Selectmen available at the Town Halls on the first three Thursdays of the month from 7:00 PM to 8:00 PM. And they're here to speak to anybody who would like to come in at that time who cannot make a normal 5 o'clock meeting on a Tuesday. The Board is always looking for feedback and comments, concerns, and compliments from the public. And if you'd like to meet with a Selectman at a different time, because these times aren't convenient for you, you can always contact the Town Administrator, Jennifer Rue, to set up a one-on-one or use the contact information on the website. There's email and phone numbers on the website that you can contact us directly to set up another time that works well for you. The role of the Board of Selectmen is primarily to oversee the many departments, personnel, and finances of the Town. The Selectmen are confident in the department heads who are in each of their various positions. Although the Board is always willing to hear concerns, it's important to direct your concerns to the department heads first. It's their specific job to do it, to hear from you first, as they're trained and certified in that area. And Ed will start off on the Board of Selectmen meeting procedures.
Sure, thank you. The procedures are going to be as followed. It's pretty much what we've done in the past, but this is just in printed form so you all know what's going on here. Every meeting will start, of course, with a salute to the American flag. The agenda, in which is prepared by the Town Administrator, will be discussed and approved. Any Selectman may make additions or motions to add or remove items at that time to the agenda. Persons wanting to be on the agenda must either speak under the Public Comments section for a maximum of two minutes or notify Town Administrator Jennifer no later than noon time on the day of the meeting. So noon time on Tuesday if you want to be on the agenda for Tuesday night's meeting. Minutes from the prior meeting, if available, will be discussed and approved or amended. Town Administrator sends these to the Board of Selectmen in advance so we can look them over and make any corrections or whatever we need to do on them, and it'll save time. The Board of Selectmen meetings are run as follows. First item we'd have would be the department heads and committee chairs. This is an area where the department heads, committee chairs, who want to speak to the Board may do so. It would also be helpful, and we are asking that the department heads and committee chairs get ahold of the Town Administrator prior to being on the, to speaking, so we know who's coming up to speak and who's not, so we're not waiting for someone. Public comment is, if you can't get ahold of anyone to get on the agenda, then Public Comment Section would be the way you'd want to speak then. Public comment is not going to be allowed during the Department Heads of the Committee Chair Updates section of the meeting. The Old Business section, items under Old Business, are still being worked on. It's things from the prior week that we haven't finished or we want more information on. These are important matters that the Board leaves on the agenda until they're resolved, so not to be overlooked. Essentially, all new business, not completed, will move up to Old Business. Also, items brought to the Board's attention that they feel need follow-up and instruction is given to the Town Administrator will be placed under Old Business for an update the next week. Public comment is not allowed during this portion of the meeting as well. New Business. Items that the Board are discussing and hearing for the first time are placed under the agenda per the Board's member or by the Town Administrator. A majority of these new items come from the current week's daily activities, and the Board is hearing them for the first time at said meeting. If possible, or lengthy, or in emergency, the Town Administrator may email the Board with supporting documents prior to the meeting. Public comment also is not allowed at this time.
Public comment. Can you guys hear me?
One.
All right, good. All right, so public comment. This is a time when anyone from the public can address the Board by approaching the podium, stating their name. This time is designated for any concerns, complaints, or compliments. Please take note, however, the Board will not tolerate name-calling, swearing, or direct insults to a specific employee or person. These situations must be dealt with in a allowed, allowable... Sorry there for a minute. These situations must be dealt in a different manner, perhaps in executive session. If you are unclear, if your subject matter is allowable, please speak to any Selectman or the Town Administrator in advance. Also, all comments and/or questions must be addressed to the Board of Selectmen only. Announcements. Any upcoming events that the Board or Town Administrator are aware of will be placed under this section until expired. If you have an upcoming event, please contact Jennifer to get it on our announcements. Meetings. Based on the Freedom of Information law, all meetings must be posted and advertised a minimum of seven days in advance unless deemed an emergency. The Board uses the Town's website, Town's cable channel 26, and weekly agenda to meet that requirement. All meetings will be filmed and aired as well. The Board of Selectmen will follow Main State Statute Title 1, Chapter 13, Subchapter 1, Section 405. In conclusion, at the conclusion of the Board of Selectmen meetings, we ask you to respect the meeting is over and exit the hall. If you still have items you would like to discuss that are non-emergency, please contact the Selectman or the Town Administrator on the next business day. Thank you very much for your cooperation.
I just want to point out that these procedures are found on the website, the Board of Selectmen page on the Town website, actonmain.org. Do we have a, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion we approve the agenda.
I'll second that agenda.
All in favor? Okay, so we have two sets of minutes that we can approve. If I can get the dates correct, it's August 29th and August 22nd. Do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Make a motion we approve the 29th, the 22nd, and the 29th of August.
And I'll second that.
All in favor? Department Head Committee Chair Updates. No, I attended the fire rescue meeting last night, and they're on target to get the motor vehicle checks. Oh, that's going to be up on the old business, but he did hand out some more papers and also getting their website or their email addresses updated. So it was a good meeting, productive. Old Business Maintenance Zoning.
So I spoke to the code enforcement officer today. He indicated to me that he sent out six new additional letters last week. He said that he is starting to see people come in for compliance. There have been a variety of people that have come in to speak to him about it, and he wanted to make sure that the Board was clear that he was speaking to violators any day of the week, and he believed that was your instruction. He's still sticking to Wednesdays. He has had some complaints come in from contractors, which I know I passed one on to you, Ed, and he was just looking for the Board to reiterate that for now, we're going to stick to the Wednesday schedule, and he's doing, and as you are instructing in regards to the violations only on Wednesdays, no permits. The other days of the week, you wanted to see violators any day, but complaints that come in or concerns have to go on Wednesday. Is that the Board's intent?
I'd say at the moment, yes. We have had two people come in. One was someone that had a question about the zoning on the particular, is Wednesday, junkyard zoning, I guess is probably, I don't know how else to phrase it. But that person came in on a different day, and he did not address the situation that day. We also had the flip side. We had a contractor that wanted a inspection done on Wednesday, which is the day he handles the junkyard zoning, which he couldn't do. So we've had both cases. So we're kind of looking at it. We're keeping an eye on, you know, how the workload's going. At some point, I see it probably changing that he'll go back to a schedule where you can get most anything done any day that he's here, but for now, I mean, we're sticking to the way it is.
Motor Vehicle Checks. I just went over that. He's still handing papers out. He handed a lot out last night, so we'll hope they'll be rolling in some more. Deputy Vehicle.
According to Major Mitchell, we're looking at it probably about another week, and hopefully Deputy Shaw will have the new SUV in his possession.
Meeting Room Walkway.
So hopefully you saw the changes when you came in. It's pretty much done. Mr. Winchell needs to smooth out the difference between the ramp and bringing the tar up. Also, the railings need to be put in, but it's essentially completed. Mr. Drummy is going to put in more plants, and he's going to put a birdbath in where that old well was, so. But I'm, with your permission, we'll remove it from the agenda. It's essentially done.
Yep. Sounds good. It looks good out there.
And under that too, well, actually, never mind, sorry. The next one.
The Doors and Lights.
Doors and Lights.
Okay.
That's our last piece. So all of the exits have been, I shouldn't say all of the exits, enough exits to meet main municipal's requirements have been marked. The emergency lights have been replaced. Remember, those didn't work the last time we were checked, so all of that should be done as well.
Route 109 Update.
So this is on there more just to follow up with the Board to see what they wanted to do last week. I know you've had some concerns from citizens in regards to the unfortunate numerous accidents on 109. We have taken the steps that we could in regards to the Sheriff's Department, put the slowdown sign on 109. I know that we've had some comments that it's not in the most ideal place. Certainly, that can be moved around if the Board wishes. I did notice that DOT cut the trees by the bridge. CMP, it doesn't look like, have cut them to the left of the store yet, but they assured me they were working on it. The actual signs, the traffic light signs, I did talk to the Town of Sanford. We talked about the sign that has the vehicles approaching and the lights up from the left to the right with the sensors. It's certainly your decision, but the thought is, is that a place like the foot of the lake there is going to be lit up constant because of the traffic in and out of there. And then there is going to be an expense to the Town, and then there was some discussion about a possible light down there. You're going to see a little later on on the agenda. I have drafted a letter to the Department of Transportation asking them to do a speed survey by the Trading Post to see if we can get that limit dropped some, but really, we've been in a very unfortunate time where these were, you know, single accident, single vehicle accidents that were just unfortunate. So I'm not sure what, if any, the Board wants us to pursue in that area.
I don't know, I think we've covered it about every angle we can. I mean, the last piece is the letter to the DOT to see about the speed limit down there.
And the direction was 35. It's 40 through there now, 40, I think, through there.
35 would help. I mean, 35, they're still going to be going 40.
Right.
40, they're going to be going 45.
Right.
So, yeah.
But that's what you wanted the letter to say, 35?
Yeah. And I did get an inquiry from Anne Marie...
Mistrakio.
Mistrakio, who is the rep, I believe, in the Sanford area. Someone contacted her about the speed limit as well. So that was passed on to me. I did pass that on to Jennifer, which she'll email it to us. Same situation, just about trying to get the speed limit lowered there, so.
And I spoke to, emailed the Sheriff's Department as a whole, but also have spoken to Deputy Shaw in regards to the speed concerns in that area. And again, I mean, it's, you know, we have 40 hours a week split between two towns, but, you know, he'll do his best to try to increase enforcement in that area.
The Office Assistant Position.
We got probably eight or nine different applications. Sitting down with, I think, six of them tomorrow to do some interviews and see what we have, so I'll be back in touch.
Road Committee Survey.
At last week's meeting, you instructed me to reach out to the road commissioners, have them review it. I did speak to both of them today, and they're asking for another week. Hopefully, by next week's agenda, they haven't had a chance to make all of their proposed changes, so don't really have anything new to report yet. We're still working on it.
Thank you. New Business Letter to Department of Transportation.
That's what I drafted. Let me know if you have any changes.
Do you want to read it?
I'm going to read it.
Sure.
This goes to Tim Soucy at the Main Department of Transportation. Dear Mr. Soucy, on behalf of the Town of Acton, please consider this letter a formal request to have a speed survey done on Route 109 specifically before and after the entrance of 57 Route 109, Acton, Maine. This is the location of the Acton Trade and Post, a store that sits directly on the Mousom Lake and offers a full food deli menu, gas, beer, hard liquor, and many other items. It is also directly across the street, approximately 200 feet from the beach and public parking lot. With that said, you can imagine the traffic in and out of it. The Town of Acton appreciates your efforts and understands the possibility of time constraints. With that said, we'd like to point out that we have had numerous accidents in this area, most recently a fatality. We have reached out to another division of DOT.
Make a motion we send the letter.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Three Rivers Land Trust Money.
So Goat Hill. Just when I thought we were all done with it. So a month or so ago, remember, we, at the request of Three Rivers, we went out to bid for a parking lot project. We got three bids that essentially the Board tabled because there was a big space in between the amounts, and we wanted to check references. Since then, because there was such a gap in the prices, there were some communications about having the Town employees do the work, and that was kind of the direction that we were heading into. So last week, you signed the letter to allow for billing for the grant money, because remember, we're still waiting for the grant money to come in. The state has indicated that they will only allow the Town to be reimbursed if the project is given to the low bidder. And the only way around that is if they, if you can give them substantial reasoning or just cause for choosing that bidder, and then why the next one wouldn't be. Federal government has different guidelines going out to bid, although we've said on, at a couple of meetings, that the Selectmen have the right to, you know, to reject any and all bids. The government doesn't follow those same laws, and this is grant money, so things have changed some. So we're in the process of reaching out to references and checking on the different people that bid, and hopefully I'll have more information for you that for next week. But in the meantime, we're in the same situation that we don't have the grant money, and Three Rivers wants to have this done by October 1st. So the question came was that can Three Rivers give the Town of Acton $10,000 for us to pay for the parking lot bid, and then when the grant money comes in, we reimburse Three Rivers, which is very similar to the process that happened with the down payment. So as Louis is shaking her head, no, the answer is actually yes. We turned it over to Burke and Clegg, the attorney, who drafted that, who feels like the special town meeting that we had that incorporated the funds that allowed us to expend at once covers it. So if you want to read that letter aloud and see if it's something you want to pursue, let me know.
My only concern, will we still have to go with the low bid here?
We have to go, we have to go with the low bid. You're going to have to go with one of the bidders, unless you can provide to this individual who's overseeing the grant, just cause for not.
My concern with going with the low bid is I don't think it included the actual work that needs to be done.
Yeah, and he is willing to hear all that and listen to all that.
Okay.
So until, I was certain that that was the avenue you wanted to pursue, and you've seen that letter from your attorney. My plan tomorrow is to contact all three of them, obviously, starting with the low, go over the RFP that we sent out, make sure that everything's covered, and, you know, check references, and bring the information back to you. But we weren't sure that we were even going to be able to accept the money from Three Rivers. So essentially, Brad has drafted this up, saying to Three Rivers, you know, if anything happens, you know, we're going to accept this gift from you, but if anything happens and for any reason you don't get the grant...
Thank you for the gift.
Thank you for the gift. The parking lot is paved. I mean, there's no recourse on the Town of Acton, so.
How much was the low bidder?
Eight.
Yeah.
Eight something.
Eight thousand, okay.
Yep, and the next one was 16,000?
Twenty, yep.
And then 21.
And they had only budgeted between 10 and 12,000, so we may end up having to go back out, or again, if we can explain all that to the representative from the, you know, that's overseeing it, maybe we'll have more ground, but until we've done the legwork, it's, you know, it's a process they want us to take.
Do you want me to read this aloud?
Sure.
Dear Jen, you had asked whether the Town could accept money from Three Rivers Land Trust for the construction of a parking lot at the Romack Hills property, which would later be reimbursed when and if grant funds came into the Town. By way of background, the Town had applied for a grant for the purchase of the Romack Hills property. The Town passed special warrant articles to reimburse Three Rivers Land Trust for portions of the purchase price when such funds were received as a result of the Town's grant application. The warrant articles at the special town meeting did not deal with this specific issue regarding the advancement of funds for construction of the parking lot. I reviewed your other town meeting articles. Your annual town meeting warrant contained a rather standard article allowing the Town to accept and expend funds pursuant to grants and donations as long as they do not encumber the Town in any way. It is my opinion that this warrant article provides existing authority for the Town to accept funds from the Three Rivers Land Trust to construct a parking lot, provided that there is no recourse against the Town for repayment. The Town certainly can and should agree to reimburse the Three Rivers Land Trust from the grant funds if they are in fact received. The grant funds were specifically designated for that purpose. However, if those funds do not arrive for any reason, there can be absolutely no recourse against the Town of Acton. If the Three Rivers Land Trust is willing to give money, give the money to the Town to start the project now based on that clear understanding that there is no recourse for repayment, then it is permissible for the Town to accept funds. If grant funds designated for this purpose are received, they certainly can be reimbursed to the Three Rivers Land Trust. However, the Town is not obligated to reimburse Three Rivers from any other source because that would require a special town meeting vote and appropriation. If Three Rivers Land Trust wishes to move forward and give the Town money to start the project now based on these understandings, I would recommend that you have the organization sign the bottom of this letter to acknowledge that it has no recourse against the Town. Thank you, and please do not hesitate to contact me if you have any questions. Brad Moran.
So does that address any concerns that you would have?
Sounds pretty straightforward to me.
So in speaking to Carl Davis, he did tell me earlier in the week that they had made them, they had taken an actual vote to give the money to the Town, and of course, he was looking for something in writing as well. Three Rivers wants to be covered, so if we can get a copy of those minutes, we'll have at least the majority sign the letter, and we'll move forward with the, looking into the people that bid, and hopefully by next Tuesday, we'll have a recommendation to award it to somebody.
Okay. Sounds good.
Anything else?
No, no. Town Report Letters Due.
Oh gee, thanks.
For the surprise in the middle.
Okay. I think this is the same letter we had before, but...
I changed a few words.
Did you now? Says, "Hello, everyone. It's time once again to start thinking about your department or committee's letter for the 2016-17 Town Report. As was done last year, we continue with our electronic formatting and request that all persons email their report in rather than hard copies. If you do not have access to Microsoft Word, then contact the Town Administrator directly, and I will work with you together and give you support, office support, and office space so you can do that. The Board of Selectmen appreciate everyone's attempt last year to get their reports in on time, and we ask that you do the same again this year. In an effort to get these done in a timely manner and off to the printer, we ask that all reports be sent in no later than Friday, October 6, 2017. Please remember, your letter should focus on the period July 1, 2016 to June 30, 2017. In closing, thank you again for your cooperation, and please keep in mind that this is an ongoing project for our staff. We work on a daily, we work on it daily as documents come in."
Does it not flow?
No, it's, my mouth doesn't flow.
Okay.
So please don't feel like you have to wait until October 6 to submit your, submit your letters.
I just...
Please email to jru@actonmain.org.
I just want to point out that these reports that you submit to the Town Report, you're summing up what you've done over the year, it's a piece of history that people can look back on to. I know people look at the Town Reports to see how things were done way back when, and it's just a, it's a piece of history that we, it's a...
The more information, the better.
Yeah.
And I know we've referred to them many times over the years.
I mean, in past, years prior to the last couple of years, we waited really until December or January to get them in.
Is that by choice, or?
Well, no, in past years, we didn't get on it this quick. The nice thing about this time, getting on it quick, is the information is still fresh in the Department Heads' minds. They're not thinking, they're thinking the right time period, not thinking a year ago, so.
So on that note, who will be writing the...
Oh, I've started it.
Typically, it's done by the head, by the chair.
Yeah, okay. And I don't want to have this conversation in public because we like to make it somewhat a surprise, but you need to be thinking about the dedication. We'll talk about it next week.
Okay. Catering Application.
So this is catering application. Remember, we had one for alcohol, we had one a few weeks, no, probably a few months back, and we checked with the State Department of Liquor, and essentially, they said this was an FYI because it's a catering event. It was more informational for the Board to know what was going on. Send copies to the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department as well, but we really don't have any control over making a determination, excuse me.
I can announce it.
Yep.
It's a grand opening of the Town Square Realty on 109 next to Willie's Drive. Weather permitting, outside bar, beer and wine for the grand event. It's going to be on the 27th from 5:30 to 8:00. Catered by Above &amp; Beyond Catering, so congratulations. Do we make a motion to approve?
It's got to be signed.
Okay, sure, I'll make a motion and we approve the catering license, or catering...
Application.
Catering application.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Animal Control Appointments? Oh, we never appointed them?
Well, we appointed them, but we appointed them for 45 days just to kind of test the waters and see what they thought. Wayne Hamm has done a fine job representing Acton and thankfully is...
Still doing it.
...willing to continue with Robin as a deputy, so those appointments go through June 30 of 2018.
Okay. To Wayne Hamm, Animal Control Officer, and to Robin Hamm, Deputy Animal Control Officer, the Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine here appoint you, as I just stated, within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30, 2018.
Make a motion that we appoint Wayne Hamm, Animal Control Officer, and Robin Hamm, the Deputy Animal Control Officer.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Special town meeting.
So we've had the conversation over the last month or so. It keeps kinda coming up in topics, so I'm really looking to the board for a decision as far as tabling it or moving forward. There's been some talk about putting a special town meeting together for an assistant deputy CEO. We've talked about a couple of different possible ordinances, moratoriums. So I'm just looking for direction as to what you wanna do. Or if you think everybody, everything can wait until next June.
Well, without having the second informational meeting on the marijuana, I, in hearing the surveys of the results, I don't wanna be quick to say.
Okay.
That that would be on it, but most likely, I'm not, I'd like to plan that it would be.
So you want me to just table it until the twenty-sixth? Because the marijuana is what, on the nineteenth? Nineteenth. So it's gonna be after your selectance meeting, so it doesn't do any good to discuss it next week.
Okay.
So by the twenty-sixth, we can make the decision?
Yes.
Do you want, are you looking to move forward with the deputy CEO? I mean, we've drafted numbers based on, what, eighteen, twenty bucks an hour, ten hours a week, fifteen hours a week? What's the thought there?
Yes, we should move forward.
Yeah, I think we've proven.
Yeah, we had talked about it.
So that's, okay. Do you want it based on eighteen or twenty dollars an hour? In the past, we've started them at eighteen to twenty when they get certified.
You can base it on twenty, but, I mean, we don't have to give twenty.
Okay.
So.
Ten hours? You want the article based on ten, fifteen? You don't wanna go over twenty-one, 'cause then you have benefits.
Right. Fifteen?
Okay.
I just wanna make sure if we're gonna do it, we'll have enough money put in there to do it. Like I say, start the person at eighteen, but, you know, there's a little wiggle room there.
Sure. Public comment. I will remind that the comments are going to be limited to two minutes.
Actually, I have two. One, I wanna thank everybody for going for the quilt hop, which was last week at the church. The donations and stuff, for going forward to help rerepair the church. It was nice of the historical.
A little louder.
It was nice of the historical society to be able to come down and show us different quilts and different things. I understand they had quite, they're quite the group and quite the quilts. So thanks to them, and thanks, everybody, for showing. Second all, I was wondering, the outdoor ramp here, I was just looking at it. It looks great, doing fine. My thing was the narrowness of the thing compared to yours in front of the library. When you bring a wheelchair in, is that gonna be wide enough access?
It's not, the project's not finished, so it'll look different.
Okay, because I saw where they're gonna put the rails, and I'm thinking, uh-oh.
Yeah, may I? I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead.
So code enforcement officer has been working with Mr. Drummy, and it definitely meets the five feet of ADA compliance once the rails are in, so it definitely will.
So I know, I just don't want a tight term, because I bed in both positions, behind and in one, so it's not fun. All right, thank you. It looks great.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Cindy Hart, Road Committee. I feel the Road Committee should be involved in the survey. We should take a look at it and be able to give you input, too. Many of us have worked on the committee for quite a few years, and I think it would be helpful.
Can we give them a copy after, to look at? We'll give them a copy for their meeting that follows this meeting?
Yeah, if that's your instruction.
Yep.
So, I mean, just so we're clear, because I don't wanna be waiting, so you want them, you're gonna allow them to make changes to it as well and submit them back?
Minor changes, or additions or whatever. But that doesn't mean that they'll be included.
Okay, and just keep in mind that when it was, the way it's gonna be presented to you tonight, the board's already authorized four or five of the items coming off, and that's not gonna be on your draft. I'll give you the original that was created, since we haven't gotten them back, right?
Yes.
Mike McCrum. I'm a little confused. Is the Road Commission even back in business?
You mean the Road Committee?
You guys put him on hold, and I'm just wondering, you know, what's going on there?
They have a right to call a meeting and meet.
Okay, all right. So they're back in business?
They're back in business.
Because they're elected.
They're, they're elected by the town floor.
Right, oh, I know.
Yep.
Didn't hear any official word.
Manis, I just wanted to say that I appreciate that the code officer is getting to these.
A little closer to the mic.
To what's been going on. And I appreciate that you would agree that on Wednesdays, that might not be a permanent situation, because, first of all, I don't think it's posted and people know about it. So if you happen to come to town hall and you're unaware of it, it would be nice if no one is waiting behind you, that you would be allowed to speak with him, and that it would not be a problem. And I think, I'm sure, Jen, I just wanna use you an example, that on a best day, you probably come in and think you're gonna take care of one, two, and three, and phone rings, and email comes in, something else happens, and you deal with it as it comes in. I think that should be the case there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no other public comments. We'll move on to announcements.
Jim Driscoll, I'd just like to thank you people for serving, putting in the time, and thank you for being professional, week after week. It's not an easy job sitting up there, but a great deal of respect for all of you, and thank you very much for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move on to announcements. Mary Grant is having a potluck picnic on September seventeenth, which is Sunday at one. That's also the grand opening of the Story Walk that was put together by our local Girl Scout, Hannah Robertson. It's her Silver Award project, and she collaborated with the Mary Grant Board and the Acton Public Library Board to build that, with lots of help from local businesses. Applefast 5K is on September thirtieth at nine AM. It's also on Sunday, October first. The Zoning Board of Appeals, the Rec Committee, and the Cemetery Committee all have openings for volunteers that would like to serve on those committees. And we have a few, quite a few upcoming meetings. The Planning Board meets on September twenty-first at seven PM. The Road Committee is meeting tonight at six. Informational meeting on marijuana is September nineteenth at six PM. The Forest Conservation Committee is meeting September nineteenth at seven PM. The Recreation Committee, September twenty-first at seven PM. Planning Board, September twenty-first.
Jen.
Wait.
That's how you show, you can tell they're not rehearsed. That's a duplicate, sorry.
Warrant and Finance Committee, the twenty-fifth at six PM. Auditor meeting with the Board of Selectmen is next, is that next? Oh, in two weeks. September twenty-sixth at six PM. And the Cemetery Committee is meeting September twenty-eighth at five PM. Is that all? Do you have anything else to add?
I don't.
Make a motion we adjourn.
Second it?